Okay, let's start the meeting then at six oh seven. I'll call it to order. And we'll start out with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. And I think we're actually getting the hang of that. Okay, so adjustments, I see none. Approval of minutes, I will make the motion to accept the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Rue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And I guess we'll put Kendra down as an abstain.
Mute.
Okay, public comments. I see we have some public out there. Now's the time if anybody would like to make a comment. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Communications, I see none as well. Committee reports, construction update. Mr. Nelson, the floor is yours.
Okay. Okay, so I'll start with the high school technical center project. I was down at the high school last Thursday. I bumped in to the superintendent from Hutter. And he was very pleased with the work that's going on. They made significant progress on the outstanding punch list this over the last few weeks.
No, put me down as a yes. I just, I'm gonna watch it on my TV.
Okay. The list has been, the punch list has been reduced to approximately twenty-five items. That will just be pending the verification by the architect. Lavalley Brenziger Architects are planning to be on site this Thursday to review the accomplished items. Once verified, the retainage that is currently remaining at approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars will need to be reviewed against the remaining items. We'll also have to review it with legal counsel related to the liens on the school from some of the subcontractors. Remaining items include the HVAC system balancing issues, which will be reviewed in more detail once our assistant facilities director, Wob Welch, finishes his review of the HVAC controls. Corrections are in the process of being made to the competition field and track at Alumni Stadium. Those have been reviewed by the owner and Sebago Technics as I reported last Monday's meeting with that. And those have been identified and accepted by the subcontractor. And they're hoping to accomplish those and get those fixed as soon as possible. So we continue to make progress at the high school technical center. Any, any questions on the high school technical center report?
Hey, Matt, this is Jonathan. Is, what's the value of a lien on a public high school?
It all, I think, kind of depends on what they are looking at, the subcontractor, for damages. And in this case, I think it's close to around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with that. So that's why we're, we'll engage legal counsel just to make sure that we are covered in the event, in that event to that amount.
All right.
Okay, I'll move on to the MCS construction update. Our architect completed a punch list of all the rooms on the first floor of the addition of new classroom wings. With the exception of the corridor, he did that last Friday morning. The contractors had cleaning crews on the second floor of the new classroom wing. And they were to move downstairs Friday afternoon. We currently have some school furniture stored in the gymnasium that's gonna be moved into the first floor classrooms beginning Wednesday this week. And after we move that out, the contractor will continue completing the finishes in the gymnasium. Finished work is near completion on the two existing classroom wings. The center core and admin addition have drywall hung and finishes scheduled to begin soon. On the exterior, metal siding continues on the few upper areas that have metal siding. The site work is progressing well. Rough and finish grading is taking place and the sidewalks have been paved. The architect is working with the contractor and the Sanford School Department to negotiate the delay claim that I reported out last Monday. The architect and the contractor are meeting later this week to review the construction schedule impacts in more detail. Also, the contractor notified us last Friday that Tim Summers, the project manager for the MCS project, is no longer working for PC. He's taken another position with another company. They have appointed a replacement, Garrett Bertoloni, who has been with PC Construction for thirty years for that. So we do not have a meeting scheduled for this week. Our next meeting is scheduled a week from tomorrow. So at this point, not sure if that's gonna have any impact on any of the ongoing delay negotiations. Also happy to announce that we were able to put out a bid package for the furniture for Margaret Chase Smith's school, the FFNE bid package. We released that last week. And we already had nine bidders with that. You break that down, it's four local dealers and five specialty companies. And so as we're in the bidding phase right now, our our consultants will be responding to the bidders' inquiries, reviewing substitution alternates and preparing the Department of Education FFNE list for submission. So happy to report that. Any questions on the MCS project? Okay, I'll move over on to the converted middle school project. In a converted elementary school, since our last reporting last Monday, the progress appears to be focused on the continued wall tile replacement and repairs. As we've reported, the previous install was poor. And the new subcontractors on site have numerous people working on wall tile and floor installation. One, one day last week, there were twenty-two workers just from that sub that were noted on site. The flooring underlayment is being installed in the area of the first floor. And floor tile will follow shortly after that. The millwork installation continues to progress. Mechanical electrical trades are continuing work. There are a small number of painters, masons and insulators also on site. Regarding converted elementary school, our contractor had hired their own company for a hazardous materials investigation. And their report came back last week, indicated there were some lines of hazmat containing pipe insulation that's gonna be, needs to be removed at those areas affected by the work. That's the bad news is, the good news is we've identified that already. And we'll be able to plan accordingly so that when we do start at the converted elementary school, hopefully that will not lead to any delays. As far as the schedule status, we have still not had a meeting since our last meeting, last, last school committee meeting last Monday night. The contractor, they have new leadership on site. And they have been working, meeting with all the subcontractors to try to identify a schedule. We will continue to push for that. Our next construction meeting is scheduled for this Thursday afternoon. In terms of a budget status, when you look at converted middle school, the original contract sum was eleven million, one hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty. That current contract sum is at twelve million, five hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. The latest requisition was recently signed for the month of March progress. And that was, that rec was for five hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. So the remaining balance that we have on the project is three million, ninety-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. At the converted elementary school, the original sum was five million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. The current contract is five million, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. The only requisition that we received for that was back in September of two thousand and nineteen for a amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two. That leaves the remaining balance for the project at five million, three hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. And so right now, the construction budget's at sixteen million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two. That will exclude any contingency and revolving fund, revolving renovation funds for the floor abatement. Those revolving renovation funds are five hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight. The contingency for the project is five hundred seventy thousand, six hundred and fourteen. And the current sum is seventeen million, nine hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven. That does not take into account the cleanup costs that we've done for the abatement. So in summary, a rejuvenated, rejuvenated push from the new leadership and structure tone on site seems to be a positive for the progress that's going on. Corrections to the deficient work will slow the contractors' push to finalize the project. However, it does appear that they are staffing those areas of corrections with adequate manpower right now. As I talked about, a project schedule is needed to provide proper planning for the school district to move ahead. As I mentioned, we're hoping to get an activity, an updated schedule this Thursday for the meeting for that, with that. The abatement activities and the corrections to remediate damage caused by the abatement activities have really put a pressure on the overall budget. As I mentioned below, mentioned earlier, in terms of the project budget. So any questions on converted middle school? That's the construction report.
Excellent. Good work, Matt. So next we have performing arts committee. You have anything to share with everybody, Emily?
Sure. We didn't have a meeting this afternoon. It was nice to see everyone's face. Brett's really still just working very hard at keeping the spotlight on this back. Right now, he was, you know, before the governor's reopening plan, he was starting to reschedule shows. He has stopped that indefinitely, for indefinitely because, you know, with the governor's order and gathering size, it's making it, you know, very difficult for him to really put anything back on the calendar. They're looking into streaming some of the rentals that are coming up, such as some of the dance recitals. And also, we talked about currently some of the school events. Some of the awards and such are being taped right now in the Performing Arts Center. Big kudos to Sarah Schnell helping with that. And so that seems like it's been going well. And then we started talking about forming a isolated kind of committee for sponsorships for the new year. So we meet again next month and I'll have another update for you then.
Great. Thanks, Emily. I'm assuming Kendra's not with us yet?
I'm with you.
Oh, hey Kendra. Excellent. Do you want to say anything about SSR TV advisor?
Yeah, you know, we've been meeting via Zoom on every Wednesday afternoon. I recall the big thing from last meeting was a lot of discussion that frankly, I had trouble keeping track of. But there's a lot going on with trying to figure out how to connect things that are on the, the City Hall website to the school and trying to make streaming available to the public, whether or not they have cable. So making all, all of the things that are being taped to recorded available, like making a quick link, you know, Bob Stackpole talked about that. How can we have a quick link to the public and on both the school and the city website to watch things they want to watch? So I think we're making a lot of progress. We're meeting again Wednesday. And Dawn, you were, you were there, so you could probably articulate it better than I can.
No, it sums it up pretty well. There's still a lot of energy there. Sarah's doing a ton of good work. You know, a lot of discussion about how this whole current pandemic really highlights the need for an SSR TV and an outlet for this kind of information. So it sounds like this week, we're gonna try to nail down the mission statement, vision statement. We also, last week, Sarah had put together kind of a virtual tour of what's in the studio, the assets that we have at the high school, just to get everybody familiar with that, so.
I want to interject. Hey, it's Sarah. I just wanted to interject because I was in the right room this time. And since we have a little bit more of an audience with the principal, with a few of the principals around, one of the things we've been talking about also is just how do we get more content creators? And how do we push more information out? So if any of you teachers or principals have videos that your teachers are making or videos for your school, be sure and share them with me so we can try to promote them more and use that as content. And if anybody wants to read some books and send me some videos, those are always great, too.
Awesome. The junior high is currently just about done making a really awesome video, one of our Ed Tech Sam Farley finishing touches on it. I'll share that with you. I know, Amy, you've been in the loop with that. Should be done tomorrow, Wednesday. Really cool. And Sarah, if you don't mind, I'll pass that off to our school librarian, Julie Williams. She's really eager to reach out to kids. And I'm sure she'd be more than happy to do some readings to some kids and get that out there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Cool. Good plug, Sarah. Okay, we'll move on. Student representative reports is next on the agenda. I don't see any of them in the list. So none of you young ladies are hiding out there, are you? Okay, I'll take that as a no. So we'll move on to the COVID-19 update. Mr. Nelson?
Well, as has been the case with, all along with COVID-19, the information is changing rapidly. Just hold on and things will change. If you remember, as we met, or left our meeting last Monday, we were looking at extending our distance learning till the middle of May before reevaluating. But last Tuesday, Governor Janet Mills extended main stay-at-home order through the end of May. And I made the decision to have distance learning remain in place for the remainder of this school year. As part of that state, as part of that press conference, Governor Mills provided details of a four-stage phase-in post-COVID-19 model. If we looked at that, that placed the reopening of schools in the final stage. No earlier than September two thousand and twenty depended on the successes of the first three phases. This four-stage plan also included limits on group gatherings and criteria for reopening businesses. Still to be determined, still to be determined is whether summer school programs, end-of-the-year celebrations, athletics and the use of school facilities for the various summer school programs will be allowed this summer. Businesses have the option of opening. Customers will have the option of entering and participating in, at those businesses. But school is the compulsory activity with extremely complex considerations. And therefore, decisions around opening of schools, in-person activities merit a higher standard of safety assurances. Right now, as we're trying to continue to navigate the ever-changing situation the, around this pandemic, the MDOE, the Main Department of Education, continues to ensure that we have the most updated guidance and support in order to make decisions for our school community. As you, everyone knows, there's no precedent here. And therefore, there's no stars by which we can plot this journey. So there's a lot of questions on how the governor's plan impacts our school classrooms traditions. And those questions are being asked by all of us, from administrators to parents, to students. The Main Department of Education has put together a group of twenty school nurses to work with the Department of Education's Nurse Consultant, Emily Poland, to develop scientifically-based, school-specific guidelines, which will then be reviewed by their partner state agencies and then shared with the educational community. So as they realize the importance of upcoming deadlines, they have prioritized their topics that they're providing guidance on to graduation, school graduation and step-up activities, summer program, summer programming, and then the start of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year with that. Right now, we are aware of the tremendous burden that distance learning has put on all of our students and their families and our staff with that. So what we're looking to do is adjust our schedule to make sure that we're not assigning any new learning after Memorial Day. That will allow the last week of May and the first week of June to be focused on allowing time for students to submit any outstanding assignments that are still due, practice and review key concepts in areas of weakness. Also an opportunity to return books and technology and for our students and families to retrieve personal belongings. So we're in the process of developing those schedules. We have a meeting tomorrow with our group of administrators that have been focused on the school moves, K through eight. And then we have an administrator team meeting on Wednesday that we will continue to try to flush out those schedules to be able to also take the guidance that we do get from the Main Department of Education. Right now, we're in a lot of contingency planning for that right now. We do have administrators joining us tonight. From the secondary level, we'll have Pam Lyden report out on a distance learning update at Sanford Middle School. Chuck Potter will report out regarding the eighth grade. Kathy Sargent will report out for SRTC. And Matt Peterman can also give an update coming from the high school. So I know under the director's report, Cheryl Fornier can also give an update on the CARES Act federal funding as well. So that is the COVID-19 report. Any questions?
I just got one quick one, Matt. I know we can't be talking too far down the road, but with the decision to be distance learning for the rest of the year, do we have any sort of updates for people at home as far as end-of-the-year stuff? You know, kids turning in laptops, graduation, prom, or even at least a timeline on when those decisions will be put out there?
Yeah, I think it's, right now, we've started that work. I think for some of those questions, Matt Peterman might be able to give an update, at least with no decisions, but at least what some of the things and considerations are that are going on right now. We are looking at trying to also make sure that we do get guidance from the Main Department of Education. I did talk with their communications director, Kelly DeVoe, this morning. And Kelly shared with me that they are prioritizing end-of-the-year activities. I mentioned in my report, the group of nurses that are being convened. So they're hoping to have some information by the end of the week. In the meantime, we are working on developing those schedules at the end of the year. It is complicated because at the K through eight level, in addition to the challenges with distance learning, we also have a couple of things that are really important. Number one, the majority of our K through eight staff are gonna be moving, so we've got to get ready for those moves. And then the other thing to do is we're really also starting to look down the road at the reopening of school in terms of next year, what that's gonna look like. And we're anticipating that there's gonna be a lot of learning gaps. And we're gonna have to really make some adjustments and look at our curriculum. And so that's also being built into the end-of-the-year schedule in terms of setting up what it looks like for people, when we can set up those times for families to come in and drop off their library books and laptops and pick up their personal belongings. I anticipate that to probably take place sometime during that, starting that first week of June, June 1st.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Any other questions for Matt? Or I know, like you said, we'll be able to chat directly with the administrators in a little bit, so. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna move on. Let's go to the director's reports. And let's start out with our business administrator, Cheryl.
Okay, so as Matt mentioned, we were talking about the CARES Act. We have a week daily meeting now, actually, with a bunch of business managers. Steve actually was on with me and our grants person, Linda, to listen in. And this is probably more unanswered questions than answered questions about the biggest piece that we got out of them was it was gonna be allocated based off the Title I allocation that more or less, there were so many unanswered questions that we were, you know, trying to figure out. And so we're hoping to know more. The application is supposed to be going live sometime around Wednesday. That should actually at least give us some indicators because they're not, they're kind of not telling us a whole lot about how that's going to work. So we're hoping, because they're testing it right now. So we're hoping to have more information on that, probably in the next week or so. But we're working on that, keeping a daily tabs on that. We're also having a bond meeting with the city and Greg M. to determine the cash flow for the eight, eight-point-six-million-dollar bond that we have. So we're gonna be working on that with the city over the next week or so to get ready to get that bonding. And so that's the updates for finance.
Okay, thanks Cheryl. Quick question with the CARES Act stuff. Is the concept behind that, that this money is going to be used to help us put in place what we need to have in place for next fall to go in? Or, you know, I guess what's the intended use for that money?
There is some discussion around that, but it's a fine line on some pieces. They're, they're, they've got a question into the federal people that, the federal piece that is actually maintaining this grant that kind of goes along with that. We know certain things are probably going to be covered. But it's supposed to be due to COVID-19. And whether that, and they said both past and going forward. So we can go back to March thirteenth, anything that we had, and then move forward. My, the question was, does that mean to get ready in case we have to have, be ready to do distance learning again in the fall? And that, they said, looks like it if you read the intent. But they haven't gotten that as a definite question or answer. So to me, when I read through it, I think it should be covered. But they're trying to get the concrete answers on that.
And so it just sticks with the theme of just more, more questions and answers?
More questions than answers, yes.
Anybody else have any questions for Cheryl?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Kendra?
I'm just wondering. Have you heard at all on, would it be the local banks or the banks you typically deal with that are going to be dispossessing the money? Do you know anything about that yet?
It sounds like it's coming right through DOE, Department of Education. They have the money. The money's being allocated to them to then allocate it out. That's on this portion. So the part that goes to the schools is going through DOE. I think some of the stuff you're talking about is for the small business portion, which doesn't have anything to do with what we're working on. So there's a couple of different pieces to the CARES Act.
No, I'm just wondering. So it sounds like the feds are probably pushing things through the state and the state will push it down to us.
That's how, that's how I took it. Steve might be able to pipe in because he was on that call, too. But that's how I took it, is that the DOE was going to be allocating it.
That's good.
Okay, also Kendra? Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to Assistant Superintendent, Steve. Okay, let's move on to Assistant Superintendent Steve.
Good evening, guys. A couple of updates this evening. I just want to update you and keep you updated on uh summer programming. Um, we have a lot of summer programming that usually takes place in our district. We have the Title One Literacy Program for students in K through four. We have our Jump Start Programming, which we usually serve thirty-two incoming kindergarten students that we identify through the screening process. We also have Special Education Program that we usually have around eighty students um for special ed just head students that show regression over the summer. And then we have our Summer Food Service Programs. Um, so there's a lot that usually happens during the summer, and there's a great deal of planning that goes on with that. Um, I have met with school staff and um staff from the Parks and Rec, and we worked on developing a plan for summer facility use. And so we have that currently in place. Um, and we are currently monitoring information from the DOE um to determine um what safety measures will need to be in place if and when summer programming does take place. I spoke to Alan Grady today and the Recreation Department as well. They are, have met with their regional representatives, and they are still waiting for guidance from the DOE, from the um state as well on what they will need to have in place for summer programming. Um, so with that said, um I talked today with Tammy Delaney and Ellie Eleanor Merrick, our Title One Coordinator. We have been in conversation about um what are we going to offer um virtually for our students if we're not able to physically have students in our building? And so we'll continue to monitor the guidance and um keep you updated in what those plans are. Um, but the plan is if we are not able to physically be in the building, um what can we do virtually um for our kiddos? Last week, I reported that I was going to be meeting with the PTAs at our three elementary schools about the reconfiguration of our elementary students. Um, last Thursday, I met with the Lafayette PTA. Um, they're the school that's going to be closed, and the students will be dispersed to MCS, CGL and Willard. Um, they didn't have a whole lot of questions. Um, they were pretty excited about moving into a facility um that had um a gymnasium separate from their cafeteria, that had a full-time nurse. Um, those were really the questions they had, and they were pretty excited about that. Um, just a reminder that I will be meeting with the CGL parents on Tuesday evening at six PM and the Willard parents um at five PM on Wednesday. And I encourage any parents that have any questions to attempt. And last this evening, I would like to say thank you to Ann Hanselman, who I think may be on board in the Sanford Backpack Program, for their generous donation of gift cards to Hannaford Supermarket, Jared's Jerry's Market and Roger Super Dollar for our student assistant teams at each school. Our student assistant teams meet on a regular basis during the school year um to provide support to students who may experiencing difficulty, and they've continued to do that uh during our school closure. And so these donations will go a long way to support many of our kiddos and families. So I just want to say thank you to Ann and all of those folks that were involved with that. And with that, do you guys have any questions this evening?
No, that's awesome, Steve, for giving a big shout out there. Um, and Hanselman, the PTA have been amazing through all this, so thank you for for sharing. I know I appreciate them very much.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we can thank the Backpack Program enough um for everything they've done. So um, so no questions for Steve? Okay, I see.
Could I, could this be?
Gordy.
Regarding summer programming, I think it's gonna be difficult for our kids and parents if we are not allowed to have summer programming, then the rec department are using our facilities. It's gonna be a tough sell.
That's a valid point.
And I I think Gordy, part of that is, as we work through what the um the guidelines that are coming back, um I think that's going to be very critical and crucial, but that's something we're gonna have to pay attention to. Um.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Gordy. Uh, so nobody else? Uh, next we have uh Curriculum Director Bernie Flynn, but I don't see her on the list.
Yeah.
I don't hide out there anywhere. Are you Bernie?
No, Dawn, uh Bernie had to take her cat to an emergency pet clinic tonight.
Oh, I know. I hope her cat's okay.
Yes, I hope so uh with that. So uh she can't join us tonight. I did want to mention though uh that uh this past Friday was School Lunch Heroes Day. Um, as we know, our uh food service workers and school lunch people who are doing uh an amazing job every day, they've got above and beyond uh during this uh school closure in terms of everything that they've done. So we wanted to make sure they were recognized uh last Friday. That was something that was shared uh locally, but also from the main Department of Education. Commissioner Make uh Makeen, as well as Governor Mills, also sent a big thank you to our school lunch personnel. And then this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So want to also uh take this time to thank all of our teachers uh for all that they do, going above and beyond uh all the time to be able to help our students uh reach their potential, but especially what they've had to do during this uh school closure um distance learning phase um for that. Also, a big thank you to our various PTAs who are also stepping up in a number of different ways to kind of also recognize and honor our teachers uh with that. So, so very proud.
Excellent note for a teacher appreciation. A Roma Joes is doing free drinks tomorrow with a valid staff ID. So all the teachers out there listening, go get a free coffee tomorrow.
Can I just, can I just add a little ad lib to what Matt just said?
Of course you can, Ben.
Thanks, Dawn. Huge shout out to the PTA. Um, they went and got gift cards for every party. Um, our uh admin assistants self-addressed all the envelopes. Amy and Ann headed it up. PTA went out and got all these gift cards, mailing them to our teachers, our calf staff, our ed techs right to their homes. That is just unbelievably amazing. Again, kudos to a great, great, great PTA. Uh, Amy is the president of PTA. Please extend that gratitude to the whole team, please.
Great, thanks. Um, okay, so next we'll move on to Special Ed Director Stacy.
Hello.
This is learning update.
Um, so I guess the, the um I guess the piece around, I've been completely amazed by the creativity and um the dedication of the special ed staff and ed techs. I'm trying to find ways to connect with kids, and I I know what's happening with teachers and everybody in the school district. Um, right now, we are, the biggest thing I think about special ed is one of the tenants of providing special ed services and qualifying for special education is that you require specially-designed instruction, which is very difficult to do remotely. Um, so we have teachers and um related service providers, our speech and language therapists, our occupational therapists, physical therapists. They're creating websites, designing educational gains, games um to support specific areas of disability. Um, we're finding unique ways, literally going to a house and passing the paper through a window to get work to kids and get work from kids and having drop boxes throughout town where kids know where to put the work if um they want to return it to the teacher. Right now, overall, we're in line with the majority of um the other directors in 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 York County. Our related service providers are on average um regularly providing services to between forty-four and fifty-two percent of um the students. Uh, I think I can explain more of those numbers in terms of why that is um lower as I get to the challenges. And so one of the biggest challenges is the fact that you cannot replicate specially-designed instruction remotely. We can absolutely do our best, um which we are, and we are providing and following the IEP, and there's a lot of data collection that's gone along with that in terms of keeping track of what are the goals in the student's IEP? How do you document? Because that data is going to become critical as we move forward and start to return to school. Um, I think one of the other challenges it's it that we've been working through, and we meet every um Tuesday, and it's been exciting because we've averaged between ninety-six and a hundred and five participants on our special ed department meetings on Tuesday. And the more significant the handicapping condition, the more concerned we have about the student and how, especially our students that have the handicapping condition of um intellectually disabled or autism. I think, you know, the other challenge is really what we're all dealing with, which is operating under the unknowns. And there's a lot of things that need to be put into place and a lot of planning that needs to happen in order to to make things um move smoothly. And uh it's a challenge to do that remotely and not be able to um, it's certainly not as efficient, I will say that. Uh, I do want to just mention that because it, for me, Cheryl, it comes up in my mind under um the relief fund, and one of the determinations that was made and the challenges with our special purpose private schools. When a student is placed out of district, they can bill for the days that student is in attendance. So if, you know, Johnny goes to school four days one week, we get billed for those four days. If he is, uh, we have a no, a couple of students that really have not been engaged, who've been working with it. They're um chronically absent. And under the guidance from the Department of Ed, they have recommended to all of the directors that we pay the daily rate every day. So that is certainly something I'm keeping track of, and I've gone back and looked at the average attendance, and I know who the kids are that have been difficult to engage in out-of-district programming. Um, because when you have a student that on average is attending school three days a week and we're holding meetings, and now um the, we are in essence paying ahead or paying for services that student isn't actually receiving. And that has to do with the funding formula. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of that. That was a lot of information. Okay.
Anybody questions on that?
So I guess the last thing that's important for the de- um school committee to know is that we have been um, one, I will say that uh the Department of Education has been absolutely outstanding. The new director that is in as the special ed director, along with the commissioner, are educators at heart. It's where they started. Um, and they have been teachers and come up through the ranks, and they get it. They get education. So um I, I am hopeful and have experienced nothing but great support from the department. Now we can talk about the feds. We have been waiting for thirty days for um Secretary DeVos to provide guidance on the areas of waiver that she is going to allow under the federal regulations and IDEA. And on April twenty-seventh in the evening, she released her report, and it's easy to summarize, although it was eighteen pages. Um, she is not seeking any waivers on any aspects of the IDEA regulations. So we are um in a holding pattern as to what does that mean in terms of um compensatory ed service claims, in terms of um denial of fate, that you're not being provided in the least restrictive environment? I, I think that the good news is, is that some of the um legal agencies that typically represent parents have recently sent out a letter saying that they are not going to be pursuing or encouraging parents to pursue compensatory ed claims around your typical public school kids. The area that I'm keeping my eye on is certainly our out-of-district students. The one thing I just want to say, Steve, and I talked with Tammy today about it this morning, just to put it on the radar. I do know that our out-of-district placements are absolutely planning to be able to program for students during extended school year. So one of my concerns moving forward is if we have students that are, and our out-of-district students' needs are more severe than the students we can program for in district, if they are be going, are gonna be going to a physical educational program during the summer, and we aren't able to offer one, I have concerns about the number of requests we'll get to place those students for summer-only programming. So that's just something that um I have on the front burner to continue to address.
Hey Stacy, a quick question on that.
Yeah.
Do you have any sort of wild guess as to what kind of uh fiscal liability that might be?
Um, you know, I had a conversation. It's very interesting because uh I believe it was the twenty-seventh, and then right after that, we, Matt and I got a complaint filed. So parents, you know, I I think they've been holding off. Um, so in terms of waiting to see what the feds were gonna do, um I had a conversation today with Drummond Woodson and other directors because this has been my concern. And um what we are providing to special ed students, we are, to regular ed, we are providing. So access is not an issue. It's going to be about those kids who are um have severe impact from their disability, where the education is truly hand over hand and then prompting. And um the direction I got today was that that this was unexpected from Secretary DeVos. And what will likely happen is that there'll be a number of due process cases, and they'll go to court on some cases with really good facts so that you set the precedent where hearing officers, because that's what interprets how the regulations. So I don't have um an answer on on that for extended school year. I did meet with Cheryl uh last week, and um we have projected out the additional money that extended school year will cost us. No, uh out-of-district placements will cost us under this funding mandate or strong suggestion. And we have the money uh in the budget, but it will come uh I think Cheryl and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, what you think, but we estimated about an increase of around three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yep. And so that is what I'm doing right now is looking at um all of the data and then preparing for whenever the time is right to be able to give that to Cheryl and Matt and Steve to look at, because I see that as a direct um cost related to COVID nineteen that we should be able to get recouped for from the state. And I think the state's on board with that. They understand the hardship that this has presented.
But even, but even not, we feel that they'll be, you'll be within budget.
Yep.
Because savings from
salaries and benefits and positions we didn't fill.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, any other questions for Stacy? Anyone? No, okay. Uh, we'll move on to the uh principals then. I'm actually gonna put Chuck in after Pam, and I'm actually gonna have Kathy chat before Matt, because I think the high school is gonna be a little more discussion than the tech center. Um, so let's start out with Pam. Stanford Middle School.
Um, you know, every week I send out a Friday weekly email, and I started off with, "Good afternoon, Team SJHS." And I look at, when I was sending out this week's email, I look at team, and it's much more than the staff. It's the students, it's the parents, it's the families. Um, I just, you know, when I was typing that word this week, I'm thinking, these students deserve such an amazing kudos for being home and keeping up with all the work the teachers are giving them and just in staying connected. I mean, those personal connections are the, are the challenge. Um, I'm gonna kind of blend the highlights and the challenges in. Uh, I I actually miss cafeteria duty. I miss the days with the grape tomatoes and the, and the uh grapes being tossed across the cafeteria. I wish I could go back there. I do. I just miss all their, all their smiling faces. But I just want to give a huge shout out to everyone who's watching, to the families and the parents. This is hard. I have two kids of my own. Um, and you guys are all doing a great job. Uh, Mike and Joe, thank you very much for coming to the meeting tonight. That speaks kudos right there to uh what an awesome administrative team we have at the junior high and Chuck as well. Um, but this is hard times, and the kids and the staff are really stepping up to the plate and really creating opportunities to really get these kids engaged, whether it's um we're doing academics, or they really recognize the kids that just need that wellness check. Hey, let's, let's do lunch together. Or I have teachers just creating games just to get the kids on so you can see their faces. Um, our SAT Um our SAT, SAT team, a huge kudos to them because our guidance team, um our school nurse Shonda, everybody's just been doing an amazing job. So that's a highlight for me to see how awesome everybody has stepped up and come together as a family and as a team, in- including our PTA. Um it's been a learning curve, I also wanna give a shout out to many of our staff who have really had to up their game with the technology, the Google play, hangouts, the Google classroom, the Zooms. Um Joe and Mike, I know you guys have spent countless hours on Zooms with staff, trying to help them um navigate that, but everybody's really doing a really good job with that, so huge highlights there, um just wanted to express that. Ed techs, uh I I also wanna say we have ed techs getting on buses every day, delivering food to these families. That that's just absolutely, it makes my heart melt when I know that these people are getting up, getting on school buses, going to bus stops, getting food out to families. Um I know that Mike, Joe, myself, we just go down and we we drive around the neighborhoods just trying to see kids. I actually drove down yesterday on a Sunday, just driving around the neighborhoods, just seeing if you can see kids out on their bikes, kids that aren't connected. I think the social emotional wellbeing um is hugely important and that that's gone on a priority, so again, thank you to everybody there. Challenges, like I said, just that face to face connection. I don't wanna speak for Mike and Joe, but when we hop on these Zoom meetings with the kids, they'll they'll say to us, this is a highlight of of my day, Miss Lyden, just seeing by seeing my class peers having a conversation. And sometimes, you know what, it's not about math, it's not about language arts, it's just, how are you guys doing? And some kid, you know, showing me, Miss Lyden, you know, this is my cat, this is my bike, and that just made that that right there during this circum- Again, I reiterate that big shout out to families and kids and everybody on this team working together, making sure these kids are safe and and trying to stay connected. I mean, we certainly have that population of kiddos that have been completely disconnected, Officer Sheldon. Thursday, he's still working with us. He's gotten in in his truck with Mike and Joe and myself and we've gone out and tried to do some home visits, uh just laying eyes on kiddos. Uh then we have those high achieving kids, that's a that's fantastic, Miss Lyden, we got this done, we got this done, what what can we do next? So again, teachers are all day long zooming, um getting these materials out to kids and they're still given that enrichment and that extracurricular and working on opportunities just to, you know, foster that academic achievement for them. Attendance, you know, that always concerns me, I feel like we have forty five to fifty percent of our but then there's that ten percent of kids that I just worry about that just have not been super engaged, but staff's doing the best they can to reach out to them. Um like I, like I said, you know, the highlights, we're making it work, we've gotten into a routine. I think families have gotten into this Zoom uh schedule pretty good, teachers are doing an outstanding job trying to make sure they're connecting. Those hard kids that they're not, the communication piece is huge. Um I wanna give a shout out to our SEAL team, they've got some of our toughest kids and they're just working really hard, making connections and that Stacy, I I don't know, I know you talk to them, but I would think eighty five to ninety percent of those kids are really connected with those teachers and I find that find that amazing, so. Um.
Great.
I mean, it, the highlights are we're doing this, it it's it's okay, it's not ideal. But everybody's working together and we're not just passing this off, kids are uh working with the technology, uh working with the teachers, checking in, whether it's a social emotional wellbeing, whether it's, like I said, the math, social studies, the PE. And I and again, I step I step back and I take the principal hat off and I I be a parent, like all of you, I have a ninth grader and I have a and i- it's hard, Mackenzie, my oldest, comes down with her high honors geometry, I have to call Joe Mistracchio to do the do the math for me. But you know, again, everybody just hang in there, I feel like everybody's doing an excellent job. Um I gave kudos to the PTA, Amy, I think we talk weekly, whether on the phone, whether Zoom. We had a great PTA meeting the other day, it was really nice to hear from the parents in the community, giving such a kudos to the parents. Um but like they say, we're all in this together and we are. That's that's from the junior high.
Well, uh hey Pam, quick question, um and this might be for Mr. Potter as well. Um are you guys doing anything as far as transition for the eighth graders that are going up into the high school?
I'm glad you asked that, Dawn, so our last PTA meeting, uh Amy, I think, what do we have, like ten parents there with Joe, Mike and myself? Roughly. And now, so what we're thinking about doing, and I I present as the A team, is accessing the high schools actually, putting together a bunch of gift bags for all the eighth graders and setting up a time where parents can come in, um we'll invite staff, make sure we're social distancing, but having those families come in and just really cheering, cheering on those eighth graders, giving them a great gift bag. Certainly no fun town trip, but a gift bag and, you know, celebrating them going on to the high school. Uh Sue Winman and Sherri Baron and myself will be working on, how do we do that step up for those fourth graders coming into grade five? That's a really big deal too, those little muffins coming into the fifth grade, a junior high setting. We wanna make sure that they're getting a warm welcome and and getting that appropriate, uh meet our teachers and and see the lay of the land.
Okay, so we're working on still doing stuff like that, but in smaller groups and ensuring the social uh social distancing. So I figured you guys were all over it, so it was a safe question to ask.
That was a good question, thank you, Dawn.
Uh anybody else have any uh questions for Pam?
Hi Kendra.
Hi, yeah, I just have uh one, when you talk about the eighth graders, um how do we factor in the eighth graders from Acton that will be going to the s- high school?
That is an excellent question and I'll be honest with you, typically, uh we haven't taken that on at the junior high, I'm not sure if uh Mr. Pederman wants to add into that at all, just cuz we don't know that student body. Uh Matt, I'm sure you guys do some sort of step up, I I can't answer that question accurately, so I'll kinda divert to you for that.
Yeah, traditionally, we have a a step up day uh for the Acton students where they come and shadow another Acton student, obviously, we can't do that uh this spring. However, we will in the fall still have our orientation and it is possible that we could have them shadow another Acton student potentially in this in the fall when they go back to school.
I would just add too that um we were fortunate enough to have had our eighth grade scheduling meeting before the pandemic um where we had a lot of Acton students come um and tour the building, while not all of them, a vast majority. And I have held an evening Zoom with um Acton families to do scheduling and those kinda things. Not the same, but they've at least um gotten some of the orientation that they usually get.
Yeah, doing the best we can.
Yeah, that's a good question too, because typically, when you look at an eighth grade transition to ninth grade, this has been pretty different for us this year because the eighth grade's been up at the high school, so it's gonna be different for them in terms of not probably as big a deal as it normally would be if they weren't at the high school as eighth graders, but we can't forget about the Acton kids in terms of what that, so that's awesome, it's Beth Beth had an opportunity to already go reach out, connect with those families.
And I would just add, am I muted?
No.
Um I would just add that I've been in conversations the last few days with um the director in Acton of Special Ed and there's only four special ed students um coming from Acton to the ninth grade and we are scheduling meetings with her and the families just to um look at what the student will need in their i- in their IEP and get that information to Beth so that we have it sooner rather than later.
Okay, great. Um let's move on to Mr. Potter then.
Hi, everybody. Um first of all, I just want to take the opportunity to do a shout out to all the staff for staff appreciation, teach appreciation this week. Um they do so much and also to our PTAs and the support that they give everyone. I just have to echo a lot of what Pam already shared. Um you know, the staff have made great connections, students are comfortable reaching out, I can't say enough to where we've had some heartbreaking stories where students have reached out to their teachers and teachers have stepped up and gone above and beyond to try and help rectify some of the tough situations they're in, so um kudos to them and, you know, it's it's tougher, but it shows that they made such strong connections uh to their teachers for the students for a couple of groups, not that way. Um surprised as it is, I agree with Pam, I miss lunch duty, not the tomatoes and grapes being thrown around, but I do. Miss lunch duty, I miss seeing all those students, that's always the highlight uh of my day and that's pretty tough to say for junior high lunchtime. Uh but I'm glad it's only twenty minutes long when it was because I'm twenty two might have been just too much. Uh talk, I I've got some information from some staff about how the distance learning's been going. And also I reached and they've reached out to their students and I reached out, I have a small, small uh group of students who are kind of representatives for their learning community, so I tried to Zoom with them a couple of weeks ago just to see how it was going and get their perspective. And from the teachers, the pros is um they're finding that with the distance learning, the students who are kinda shy or a bit introvert are finding that um they're finding it's easier to reach out to the teacher and get that support and like their questions answered than within a classroom setting. Um they like that one to one Zoom uh connection and help because they don't feel as self-conscious with the help they're getting. Teachers are finding that um they're stimulated by the new learning they've gotta do, such as uh learning to Zoom, make uh YouTube channels, some videos for uh the students to watch and to learn from. Um they like the fact that it's still able to provide some individual feedback to students on a daily basis if needed. Um some of the difficulties though, uh as Pam mentioned out, it's not surprising that um if a student doesn't like a subject, that's probably the one they're not zooming into. And so that's why the participation rate varies depending on, um I don't think you can get um a really steady, you know, one student, you may have a small kid go into everything, but I think majority students, if they enjoy the teacher, which is a big factor and they enjoy the subject, they are participating and being engaged quite often. But if they find it's a hard subject, uh it's pretty tough to go to something that's always a challenge for you. It's not from a lack of effort from the staff, they are emailing, leaving phone messages, uh even physically calling students to try and speak to them directly, accommodate for them any way that they can, where the challenge is. Um but it's still a concern that there are some students that um are hard and aren't uh engaged as much as we would like. I think for the students, talking to the students, the the biggest thing that they're sharing with their teachers and with me is of course, that social connection, being able to see their friends and their peers. Um that's a big part of their life, it's a big part of their development and um uh tha- that's being uh interrupted and so that's been really hard for them. Um and I think it's been hard for the families too, seeing that some of the children are just having a hard time. Maybe not just with the academics, but the uh social emotional piece of the disconnection that they've been forced into. Um some other challenges besides um the inconsistency of some students joining in is is uh some of the subjects that there are some of the concepts they teach just doesn't show up well over um video or electronically, it doesn't take the place of that live demonstration or having the students be able to participate and be hands on themselves, so that's been quite a challenge. Um staff miss their students as much as students miss their staff. Um and then for a few, there's been some technological glitches, but contacting uh Joan Wright and she's equipped to swap out um equipment that's that's not working well and trying to get in the hands of students that their learning can keep uh keep trucking along. Any questions for me?
Oh Chuck, you're right though, huge kudos. The repairs department because they're right on it, if a kid has a technology issue, Joan's going right to school, she's fixing it or getting a new piece of technology out out to the kids, she's been working around the clock and she's been doing an excellent job and so is her team, so thank you for mentioning that.
Okay, any questions for Chuck? No? Okay, let's move on to Kathy with the SRTC update.
Good evening and thanks for this opportunity to talk about distance learning. Uh distance learning and CTE do not mix, that's not how we were intended to uh provide our uh particular type of learning. So this has been a challenge for us, but I I do have to say particularly on staff appreciation week that our staff has rocked it, our students have rocked it, our parents, um they've just been champions through this whole thing. Um this is not how our students like to learn for the most part, so it's been quite challenging uh for them and then just of course, missing the human connection. Our staff have learned new technology on the fly, they've juggled various schedules and various uh priorities and they're just constantly learning right now and um again, many of them, they were not built to teach this way. So it's it's really um amazing what they've done. We actually did our entire interview process, we interviewed over six hundred students, uh prospective students from our eight partner schools, we did the entire thing online. And um so we did Zoom interviews and we used an online scheduling platform. And I have to say Samantha Brink and Deanna Farrell were absolute rock stars making that happen because it was a completely new process that we were committed to doing. Um but they figured it out and the staff also figured it out and made it work, so I'm abundantly grateful for them and all that they've done. Um just really proud of how everyone rose to the challenge, um it it would be easy to say, well, you know, we we can't do that type of learning, no one said that, they figured out how to make it work and I'm just really proud of everyone. Uh we've been fortunate that there have been some online resources that have either been discounted or free in the process, I um I I know that we need to talk as a staff about what our priorities are for some of those resources because moving forward, they won't be free any longer. So it's definitely something that we'll have to do uh over the summer, really think about how we can continue to use resources that I think are are really important for our students. We will be better for this because we've learned some ways to communicate with students. I was just involved in a program advisory committee meeting uh a few weeks ago and they talked about students getting extra help if they needed and talking about what a barrier that is for students if they live in Kittery, for example, to come back for extra help after school, it just really doesn't happen. But with Zoom and with the the instructor's level of comfort with Zoom, it gives us a new way to possibly provide some extra help to students, which is really cool. Um there have been some challenges, I've kind of alluded to that, um the hu- loss of human contact, I think, is huge, I've had the honor to talk to some students recently for some interviews, uh current students and you can feel it in the the minute they get on the Zoom with you, you can feel how much they miss people and miss seeing the people that um, this student had me in tears the other day talking about Mr. Redmond and I standing outside and greeting students as they walked into the building and it just really got me because I missed that, I it's not lunch duty exactly, but I miss having that contact with students and um the the quiet building is sometimes a little too much to take. Uh of course, there are mental health challenges, I think everyone's facing that, nothing specific with students, but you know, everyone's feeling stress and students feeling the stress of their parents and their family members um is is a huge challenge for this and I think maintaining contact with one another is so important for that reason. Um our students, I'm always proud that our students are such workers, they're proud of their their work, they have a strong work ethic. Many of them have become the essential employees of the area, so that's been a challenge because um expecting them to continue learning while working some, in some cases, some really long hours has been difficult and so many of them have just stepped up to the challenge, which is really amazing to me. Uh the the big elephant in the room, I guess, is we have students who we hope to have leave us with certifications, that's one of the main reasons they come to SRTC and um that is extremely challenging right now because I'll use our CNA or Health Occupation Students, for example. They left uh in a time when actually the nursing homes had already really quarantined and so they were unable to get all of their hours for clinicals in order to earn their certification. So this is something that we have to really work on with those programs and again, I'm hoping that if summer sessions are possible, that that's something that we can use at SRTC to get students the certifications that they've been promised, whether it's to um practice or gain clinical hours or just take a test um to enable them to gain those certifications, I I think that is just one of the most important things that they could leave with and some of our students because they're seniors or many of the students in that situation are seniors, um we don't have a long time to get them those hours. So hopefully this summer will be something that we can make work. Um and we'll continue to talk about. Um and we'll continue to talk about that. We have our superintendents meeting this Friday and we'll talk about how we can make that work for all eight districts, hopefully. We've been checking in with staff weekly regarding attendance. And um although we're not at a hundred percent attendance, which is what I'd like to see. Um our lack of attendance, our our students who are not attending have been declining. The first part of April, we had about eleven percent students who we do a tiered attendance, so present and participating. Inconsistent attendance or not present. And so about eleven percent of students were not participating. To last week, we're at nine percent. So probably doesn't feel like it seem like a huge gain, but. Um for me, that's a few more students who are dialing in and uh getting engaged. And hopefully we'll see the results from that. So that's that's really important. Um I also want to give out a shout to Mike Redman, our assistant director, who's making a lot of those phone calls. That's how we get students back on track is by staff and um Mike reaching out to students. And just trying to talk about how we can solve the problems that might be in the way. And um remove those barriers for students to be able to reengage with school. And then finally, we do have some special events also. We're actually filming tomorrow a quarter three assembly, which is a tradition for us. Uh we do a roll call as part of our start of our assembly. We're gonna try to do that virtually. So we've had instructors working on that. So that should be really fun. We're also working on getting a National Technical Honor Society induction up and running through a virtual mode and then. We're also at least talking about, and I do want to get some student and parent feedback on how we can do our recognition night. Uh perhaps in a virtual way, um but perhaps with some meetings that might happen later next fall. Uh but we'll be we'll be getting some more information out about that. I'm very thankful for James Harmon, Sarah Schnell and Brett Williams. Who've worked with us on pulling together the technology that's required for all of these possible virtual events. So shout out to them for all that they've done for us. And then. All of this couldn't have happened without professional development. So I've got a couple of teachers, Sue Lamro and Frederick Luck, who have stepped up quite a few times. And volunteered to uh talk to teachers about Zoom and about Google Classroom. And things that are really new to a lot of our staff. So I really appreciate their help. So I believe that's all I have, but I'm open to questions.
Anybody have any questions for Kathy?
I do.
There we go. Good job, Catherine.
You've kind of answered a lot of them. One of the things that made me sad today when I was looking at my May calendar is that recognition night that would have been on the twenty eighth. So I'm glad you're gonna be doing something with that. That that was is such a special event. And I do worry again about the certifications for these students. And I know for some of the seniors, maybe they're going on to school and so they'll probably be all set with that eventually. But um and I know there'll be more discussion Friday, but. I'm I'm just wondering if even next fall, there would be an opportunity for some evening classes or something so that these seniors. Could get those certifications, the ones that want to go directly into the workforce. So.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's something that once we have working with my staff to see, you know, exactly who we need to pinpoint for students who need. Uh if you're taking your American Welding Society exam, which is a practical exam. Who needs that extra practice to get into a booth and make sure that they're ready for that? Um so we'll be looking at this on a student-by-student basis really and seeing. What works because there may be parents who, if we're able to do something some in the summer, if we're lucky enough to do that. There may be some parents or in students who aren't comfortable with that. So fall might be an alternative. To that, or that might be what we have to do. Um but we we wanted to try to get something in place as soon as possible for students who. Will be leaving to go into military service or leaving for school soon or going into employment and. And will be able to do that. So I I think it's gonna be kind of a tiered approach based on what we can do. But that's that's important to me, that those students were promised something and they should be able to get that.
Cool. Thanks Kathy. Uh no other questions for Kathy? Okay, let's move on to Mr. Peterman. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Um instead of repeating, I I will echo Kathy. Chuck and Pam's sentiments. Um this clearly takes a village. So you know, you've got a, you know, huge shout out to the students, the staff and all those parents out there. Uh who are helping us get through this at this time. You know, and you know, when I say the staff, I mean all of them. Uh right up, you know, through our kitchen staff and our custodial staff. Who are all still working hard to not only, you know, make sure the buildings are sterilized and clean, but our our kitchen staff working at Memorial Gym. Uh and getting all those food deliveries out every day. So that's outstanding. We might have had a little bit of a a motorcade uh with the high school and the tech center on Thursday of last week. You might have seen that on News Eight. If we didn't have the best weather, uh so that that kind of stunk, but. We did see a bunch of our kids along the way and um I I don't even know how many cars there were, but. Uh I know the video was posted online and it was very, very neat. Uh Cindy Patterson uh helped set that up. And uh since, you know, we were in vehicles and everything and, you know, our kids who were out. Were just in random locations, so there was no issues really with social distancing and. You know, we followed all of the the stoplights and things like that. So. Uh and it wasn't a walking thing, so. But we were able to see the kids and that was what was most exciting, so. Uh just some nuts and bolts stuff before I get to the the bigger stuff, which I'm sure you're all waiting on. We've done an exceptional job of really looking at our curriculum and getting it down to. Focusing on those skills and the knowledge that's critical to help our students move forward. Uh especially our underclassmen. We know there's gonna be gaps and holes potentially in the knowledge coming into next year. But we'll work on that and we'll be prepared for that in the fall. But our biggest target audience right now is our senior class and getting them through. Making sure we get them to the finish line and getting them what they need so they can be successful in life. We also instituted a five-day grace period in which to get. Homework and assignments back because if you've been out. At the Hannafords and Walmarts of the world, that's where most of our kids are working. And as of right now, we've got a bunch. That are are working during the day and they may be the only one in their household working. So. We gave them the flexibility to um get things done and get things turned in when they can. We also take our attendance weekly. Uh a student may be at work when they, when a teacher has a Zoom, but they can get caught up. Uh via the Google Classroom and still turn in the assignments uh at a later date when they maybe have a day off. Uh so our goal was to give our teach the ultimate flexibility. They know our kids. And they know their situations and anytime we find out a new situation, we try to make sure we relay that. To all the teachers so they know um it to be considerate of those things. So. And for the most part, um you know, we're asking to keep the the teachers or the, sorry, the students engaged. And and doing the right thing with um, you know, assignments and any type of formative assessments they give. If the students are giving us an effort, we're gonna make sure we get them through and get them to that finish line. We just need them to engage with us a little bit and we'll get them there. So. So if there's no questions over that. Our attendance process is is pretty um large. We send out a Google form every week. So if you can imagine, uh some of our students have five classes every day. So if a student. If one student didn't do anything for all week, they're gonna show up on our spreadsheet five different times for all of their classes. We have some kids that may only show up for one class that they might be missing. So we get a lot of lines that we have to sort through and we're primarily focused on those kids that have not. Engaged us at all over the last five days. And we have a number of different uh interventions, uh starting with the teachers, uh the school counselors. And the administrators, Mike Fallon, Troy Watts and Aaron Tremble have been working really hard making parent phone calls. And when we get no response after phone calls and emails go out. Um we'll also send just a regular paper letter and even those letters have had an impact. We have brought students back uh to the learning that haven't been engaged since March thirteenth. So our hope is every week we keep picking up more and more um who may have dropped off during that time. So. Overall, I, you know, again, it's um it's an amazing process when you think about. None of our teachers really went to school to become a virtual or an online teacher. They went to school to, you know, have students in front of them. So I think this has been a learning curve and. You know, we're catching on and we're doing better each and every day. So very proud of everybody involved. So um. Our events, which we had many in the spring. Obviously, spring athletics were some of the first things that um that went. Uh and were postponed. Uh our prom was supposed to be last Saturday. Uh that had been pro- uh postponed. And we have a tentative date in August, but again, it's gonna all depend on whether or not the um. The restrictions get lifted. Again, social distancing at a dance, I think would be awesome for the chaperones. I don't think the kids would get a kick out of it. It would be great if they were all six feet apart, but. So uh another uh domino that um is is going to fall here is our top fifty banquet. And that's when we release um along with the Elks. The Elks have many awards. They give. Not only to high school students, but to the tech center and to um the junior high. They have a few award winners. So. We release our top fifty students of the class of twenty twenty. And our top ten along with the valedictorian and salutatorian. Uh so that is still going to be on Thursday at six P M. It's just gonna be broadcast live on um Channel twenty-five here. And it will also, we'll have a YouTube link that we'll get out on social media and on our webpage as well. So this year, everyone can watch. Typically, that is not something parents are allowed to go to. It's just the students. Unfortunately, this year, we will not get the uh the great meal that the Elks always provide us, but. We uh still were able to um, you know, get the awards and the recognition out there. So. Look forward to that on Thursday. Kind of excited to see how it turns out. So um. That being said, we've been working. We have a graduation committee that always meets in the spring. We work with the senior class advisors, the senior class officers and project graduation. To kind of work through things and see how they're gonna work. This year, I've also been working with several of my colleagues, uh principals from Cumberland and York County. Every Friday morning at ten A M, we have a a meeting. Um where we discuss a variety of different things. And I've got notes that go all the way back to when we just started, um when we thought that this was gonna be only a couple of weeks. It's funny how things and how quickly they changed. So. So again, at this point, that we've developed uh an alternate plan. On June eighth, which is that Monday, we have our awards night. That that typically tends to be. Uh an event where all the kids are there. They get, um each department has senior awards that they give out. And then I read through all the award winners uh for the year. And the scholarship winners. Our scholarship meeting is next week where we determine uh all the scholarships for the spring. Usually every year, we're giving away tens of thousands dollars in scholarships. So I'm excited. Uh that's when we release that. So again, that will be like the top fifty banquet. And we will broadcast that out at six P M on June eighth. Via Channel twenty-five and the YouTube channel. So. So at this point, um the senior banquet uh obviously has been postponed. Uh indefinitely. One of the things we've given as an option. To the senior class advisors and the uh officers is we can hold that money for them. Uh until next summer, if they wanna do a, you know, almost like a one-year reunion or have a senior banquet next year. Maybe in June, July or August. That's usually when they have the hypnotists come in, they get a catered meal. It's really a good night for them and it's typically the day before graduation. So that has been postponed until a date in which they said they can get all together. Which I don't know when that'll be. So right now, as we stand um with the governor's phase in plan, stage two. Plus stage three allows for gatherings of fifty or less. So we came up with a plan that would keep our graduates in cars. And keep them at the high school and stage them at the high school. We would set up our stage. And we would have vehicles pull up to the stage, the graduates would get out and they would line up. Uh no more than six of them uh spaced out, six feet apart at any given point in time. They would drive up and when it was their turn to go across the stage, we'd allow someone in their car to get out. And film or videotape them going across the stage so they'd have a front row seat. To seeing them go across the stage. Obviously, with this, we would still have the charge to the graduates, which is done by a staff member. The valedictorian and salutatorian speeches all read uh live. Where we would set it up in a very controlled way. Obviously, we would never have a point in which, you know, there's four of us on the stage. Uh at any given point in time. So if you, you know, you've got the six graduates waiting. Plus traffic control, we probably have, you know, twenty people on the ground at any given point in time. Otherwise, everyone else is in their vehicles. So how do we do this? We've been working a little bit with Sarah uh with WSSR to talk about how we broadcast it live. We do have a very big Wi-Fi bubble at uh the campus. Which they could watch what's going on on the stage right in their vehicles uh on their device. At the same time, uh the Legends one oh four point three. Has been gracious enough to help us out and we would potentially take over their radio airwaves. And they would allow us to broadcast on their frequency live. Um so you'd be able to sit right in your car and hear everything that's going on. Again, there's, you know, there's a lot of nuts and bolts that have to be figured out, but this is the concept. We would also have, we would still be able to have our senior class photo. We're all, hopefully two hundred and thirty of them and myself are sitting in the bleachers. Through the magic of Photoshop. Uh if we take one picture in the same spot in the bleachers. Somebody told me they can move everybody around, so it looks like they're all sitting next to each other. So uh two hundred and thirty-one individual photos turns into one. Uh I was very excited about that. So um that's a distinct possibility that we'll still have a class photo. Uh they're still gonna perform their class song and we're gonna make it look like a a big Zoom. Uh just like you see with your uh you Brady Bunch screen. Again, uh Sarah Schnell and Brett Williams have been instrumental in helping with the technology. So. It it's very exciting uh that we'll be able to still have some of our traditions uh in place. So in order to make this work, the the families and graduates would have to um, you know, follow the guidelines. We typically have anywhere between eight to ten um police officers. Uh at the graduation ceremony, so they would be helpful in making sure people didn't get out of their vehicles. And and potentially gather. So that would be important as well. Following the ceremony and when they've crossed the stage. We've looked to bump our start time potentially to four P M. And that would accommodate the next part of the ceremony. And what that would be is at seven P M. We would want all of our graduates riding still passenger in the car. To be in their caps and gowns and line up along Alumni Boulevard. So we can proceed to have a procession down Main Street to Nassau. And I know the the mayor had some contact with the chief today. About it would essentially, it wouldn't be, it's not a parade. We gotta make that very clear. They're in automobiles. Nobody's walking. Nobody's getting out of their vehicle, but it would be a motorcade that they would hopefully be able to get all two hundred and. Thirty-some vehicles down Main Street with hopefully lots of people out cheering them along. And when you think about the two-mile stretch of road both sides, I think people can socially distance fairly well. In the open air like that. So if they can have a line that wraps around the back of Walmart. Six feet apart, I think we can probably socially distance along Main Street to get these kids some recognition. So again, in working with the other principals. A lot of them are going with just basically a virtual-like. Situation where they're gonna film the kids going across the stage and they're either gonna broadcast it live or piece it together. That just doesn't sit very well with me. And, you know, I think. Potentially waiting and seeing if there's something we can do in August and in hopes that, you know, things get lifted. Is a bit of a gamble because what if things go into reverse and we're stuck with a situation where we have nothing? I was very surprised to see how many graduates we have going in the Marine Corps. So I have kids that have June ship dates. So anything we do post our original graduation date, we're gonna lose kids. We have kids that are going out of state for college. We have a couple that are gonna be playing football in college. So they will leave early and then all of our military people that have summertime ship dates will lose those as well. So that's that's where we're at right now. Obviously, like Matt had said, the D O E is looking to give us some guidance. But as of right now, we are not the only ones looking to do some type of drive-through style graduation. Falmouth is working on it. Freeport, Pitterford, Lake Region, South Portland, Westbrook, Wyndham. And Yarmouth right now are working on a similar style plan.
Nice job, Matt. You're right. I just wanna put in that all of this is just under that idea of tentative. In terms of making sure that we do get the necessary permissions in terms of looking at that. But kudos to you and your committee and your work for trying to, right, make some lemonade here out of lemons. In terms of trying to look at what is ultimately an important milestone in a in a student's life with that. So it's probably a good time to open it up to any thoughts, comments, or questions from the school committee.
I wanted to kinda echo what you said, Matt. Sounds like you guys are doing a great job. You know, you're thinking about it, you're trying to make it a little bit special and not just putting out some pre-taped crossing of the stage. So. It's a lot of effort and I I commend you guys for putting the effort in. So.
Well, and so that, you know, we're obviously this year going to break with tradition. We have a very. Outstanding traditional ceremony that often just it it's perfect. We get all kinds of compliments. So, you know, we said with the with this, the senior class officers that. This isn't gonna be traditional. This is gonna be unique. It'll be a one-time thing and you'll be part of history. In that this will be the one time, hopefully, you know, knock on something. That we ever have to do this. So you'll be that one class that broke with tradition. So we wanna make it as unique and as special as possible. So. Fingers crossed.
I do wanna point out, I had a conversation today with city manager Steve Buck. And he reached out to say, hey, realizing the type of event, the unique circumstances. That the city would support and help out in any way that they could. So I I very much appreciated that. In terms of, you know, one thing that's special about Sanford is when it comes time to come together. You can always count on that. And so that's gonna be, that's important.
Yeah, graduation store is a big event for the community too. So. Any other school committee members have questions for Matt, either regarding distance learning or the end of the year stuff?
I just wanted to jump in here and I first apologize for my appearance because after Matt was talking, I was crying. Thank you, Matt, and the whole high school for really just. This is a huge undertaking and trying to make it special for this class is greatly appreciated. But I also wanted to say. A heartfelt kudos to the class of twenty twenty because. I feel like the way they're handling this is so mature. They're so well spoken and articulate in in what they wanna see happen. And they're just handling all of it with an amazing amount of grace. So that speaks volumes to their character. I did have a couple people ask me about graduation requirements and also. Community service. So I didn't know if anything, cuz I'm sure we probably have some students that may be. Right on the cusp or they're taking some classes that they absolutely have to pass right now. And also with community service. Has anything come down from the state that says that we. Have to make any kind of accommodations for them?
There has been something that came out from the state and they gave what their minimum requirements are. The the interesting thing is right now, Emily, is that. When we went through and and we got those signs for the the graduates' front yards. The number of students as of this point right now that are in jeopardy is. Less than half of what they normally would be when we enter marching practice. Yeah, so. The kids know what they have to do and if they had extra classes, we've been allowing them to withdraw from them classes. So they don't have that as a barrier. And I'm glad you brought this up because there were a couple of other things. We had started prescriptions for semester one. As well, and that we used our Spartan time for. Well, since we don't have the opportunity or the luxury of having that Spartan time with the teacher right now. Everyone who had started, we gave a pass. So we took that barrier right out of the scenario as well. Now, I've been getting a lot of questions about community service and so. I keep telling the kids, this is an excellent opportunity to get community service. Where you don't even have to really interact with anybody. You could go over. And if you have an elderly neighbor, you could go rake their yard. You could walk alongside your road, pick up some trash, put it in trash bag, carry it away. I've had students who've made trails and they've sent me the video of the trails they were on. There's tremendous opportunities out there and. One student had said, well, I am picking up groceries for my my elderly grandparents. And I said, that's community service. That's an ability to go out and help somebody who doesn't wanna expose themselves in in a store right now. So I said, you can absolutely use that. And we're not even requiring them to do all the paperwork and documentation. They can email me, they can email Mr. Watts or Ms. Smith in the office and and we'll get them covered. So, yeah, it it's been an excellent opportunity for those guys to to really go out and and do some things that they wouldn't normally do. We even said, if your if your parents don't want you to leave the house and you wouldn't normally clean up the yard and you cleaned up your mom and dad's yard. We'll give you credit for that. So it it's been amazing what we're getting as emails back for what they did. Because they'll say, you know, I went over and did so-and-so's yard and they were so happy. They put a sign up in the window and. So I think there's some tremendous opportunities right now. And if we get to the end and we've got a few kids that, you know. Need some help, we can, we can make sure we get them there.
Great. And then I just had one other question. Grading. What's going on with grading or pass fail, numerical grades? I know I got my students' progress report. And it was, it had a numerical grade on it. So.
We have some students that are totally proud of the grades that they have right now. So they would like to keep them. And and we said that that's definitely an option. I think as we get towards the end of the year, we can look at. You know, depending upon how things go. I did calculations for our our failure rates over the last progress report we had. And they were all below historical levels, even our ninth grade. At this point, and even our seniors. The amount of failures for seniors, when this is a perfect time for senior slide, were lower than they were historically. So I think. You know, you talked about the resilience of the kids. I think now that they see that light at the end of the tunnel, they know that the twenty-second is that last day of new learning. They know where the finish line is and they're they're all in. And, you know, so in the end, I think. You know, the numeric grades that fall below, you know, par, we can probably just change those. To, you know, a fail or an N E E, like we had talked, the junior high and the elementary schools are doing. To hold those kids harmless, you know, this semester.
Is that everything you had, Emily? I'll take that as a yes. Anybody else have anything for Matt? Kendra?
Kendra, yeah. I just wanted to say, yeah, I think I'm I'm very impressed and I think it's going to be. As special as it could possibly be under the circumstances. I also wanted to give a big thanks to all of people. I think it was students, parents, so many people. Responsible of those yard signs. I I would love to see that happen almost every year if that were a possibility. It is so nice when I drive someplace to see those signs. And to realize there's a senior that lives in that home. So I I think that's another great way of giving them recognition. And letting the whole community know that they're there reminding them of their achievements. So thank you to all involved on that.
I agree with Kendra. That was a very nice sentiment from everybody involved. Anybody else have questions for Matt or? Okay, thanks, Matt. Let's move on. New business, we have none. Old business, we have none. Resignations, Mr. Nelson.
Sure, I'd like to announce David Pei, Pea of the high school. His resignation will be effective. At the end of this school year.
Okay, well, we wish him the the best in whatever he's doing. So staff, is it appointments next? Is none, no, it's appointments, yep, then transfers or none. And then nominations, what do we have down here?
Yeah, this is, in order to beat the May fifteenth deadline for us to be able to nominate our probationary teachers. That's either our first-year students who will be going to their second-year probationary status. Or our second-year probationary status moving to third-year probationary status. Or also the third-year probationary status moving on to continuing contract. This is the meeting that will be doing that. So I've got quite a few to list. I will, most of us did. When we were focusing on these people, we, there were some errors in terms of the schools. Because if you remember, next year, M C S is scheduled to come back online for that. So there is gonna be a couple of changes throughout, minor changes in terms of the school, but I'll announce those when I get there. It's my pleasure to nominate the following professional staff for a second-year probationary contract. That's Josh Allen at the junior high school, Karen Belanger at Carl J Lamb, Celeste Bemis at Willard School. Jason Brown at S R T C, Megan Brown at M C S, Jan Butler at M C S. Emily Carter at Willard, Darcy Drew at the high school. Pamela Durack, S R T C, Daniel Fernandez Phelps at Willard. Tyler Flahand at the high school, Frederick Gluck at the at S R T C. Spencer Hodges McKenzie, the high school, Jamie Humber at Carl J Lamb. Lori Keen at Willard, Kathleen Meyer at Willard. Megan Menino, Allied Arts will be going between Willard and C J L. Ellie Merrick for the district, Tara Omagadi for Carl J Lamb. Cindy Finney for the junior high school, Jason Petrock for the junior high school, Jason Richard for the junior high school. Erica Scorano at the high school, Stephanie Simpson at Willard School, Lindsay Strout at the high school. Gwen Towne at the M C S and Kimberly Watson at H at the the high school. And also, before I ask you to take. Action as a school committee, I do, we do have a couple of the S R T C instructors. Pamela Durack in the horticulture program, Frederick Gluck in computer programming. Their nomination will be pending them receiving conditional certification. They do, they are responsible for taking care of that. So I do wanna have their nomination tied to that. Just to make sure that that is something that they continue to make sure that they take care of before they go into a second-year contract. For that, we've been in touch with them and they're aware of that, but I would like to add that in for those two.
Okay, then I will make the motion to approve the nominations as presented with the pending certifications as Mr. Nelson just mentioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rue. Any discussion? Hearing none. Kendra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mr. Mapes?
Yes.
Took a while to get to the mute button. I will vote yes as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to nominating the following professional staff. For a third-year probationary contract. That will be Ellen Berry at S R T C. Kyle Ann Brickett for the high school, Jennifer Brown at the junior high school, Janet Carter at the junior high school. Kristen Curtis at C J L, Suzanne Domkowsky, Willard, Amos Dunlap, the high school. Brittany Eaton, S R T C, Diane Emerson Holm, S R T C. Kelly Foley, the high school, Ethan Gwynn, the junior high school. Amy Green Lamb, the junior high school, Amanda Hartley, Willard, Amy Humphrey, Carl J Lamb. Christopher Jenny, high school, Nate McClellan, junior high, Lindsay Morton, C J L. Samantha Orchard, junior high, Katie Perro, junior high, Amy Palatano, junior high. Michelle Roy, Sanford High School, Paul Santamore, Sanford High School. Ashley Slobada, junior high school, Katie Straight, junior high school, Christian Sarat, Willard. Devon Thompson, M C S, Elena Tomlinson, the high school, Teresa Weber, E L L for the district. Kristen Wechter, Carl J Lamb, Alex Welch, Willard, and Ashley Lyman, junior high school.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve the nominations as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Tom.
I think everyone was waiting for Mr. Rue and he was, he was slow on that one. Thanks, Jonathan.
I was waiting for somebody else.
Any discussion? Okay, Kendra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Mapes?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well.
Okay, and then I'd like to nominate the following professional staff for first-year continuing contract. That would be Samantha Adams at C J L, Elliot Agresti. uh, for first-year continuing contract. That would be Samantha Adams at C J L, Ellie Agresti at the High School, Elizabeth Arsenal, Carl J Lamb, Eric Benham uh for the District, uh, G T, Tricia Bovin, Willard, Ryan Camery, High School, uh, Josh Clement, uh, pending his Latin certification for the High School, um, Allison Deneau, uh, Canario High School, William Etheridge, High School, Devon Garabedian, C J L, Samantha Hilt, Junior High School, Michelle Johnson, S R T C, Molly Kaiser, uh, High School, Rachel Lewin Grover, M C S and C J L, Stanley Pyle, Junior High, Sally Corles, Junior High, Nicole Corto, Junior High, Amanda Roy, Junior High, Michelle Roy, Junior High, Jed Russell, High School, Kayla Sawyer, Junior High School, and Deb Toothacre, Willard.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the nominations as presented with the pending certifications.
Yeah, can I just say something? Matt, you said Rachel Lewin Grover at C J L and I believe Willard, but here on the paper, it's, it says District, so.
That was an error. She's gonna be, the two schools she'll be at will be M C S and C J L.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, Kendra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Mapes?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay, so that is that for that. Welcome aboard, everybody, and congratulations on your continuing uh contracts. Uh, policies. So we have Steve, I would assume, for this.
Yes, a quick, quick one tonight, guys. We have um, policy J I C K, which is our bullying and cyberbullying in schools policy and the accompanying procedure J I C K dash R, which is a bullying and cyberbullying in schools administrative procedure. This was last updated in October seventeenth of two thousand sixteen and the updated policy and procedure uh, before you tonight simply adds a language to include gender di- gender identity and expression as defined by main state law as a protected class. This is similar to the policies we've put through the past couple of meetings. We just needed to add that into our policies and that's what this does here. And this should tidy that up so that is included in all our policies now.
I'd make a motion to accept the first reading of policy J I C K and also to accept the first reading of policy J I C K R.
I will second that. Any discussion from anybody? Okay, then we'll vote. Kendra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Emily?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Mapes?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, items for future agendas. Uh, we don't have any listed. Anything anybody would like to put out there? No? I keep trying to scroll down on the Zoom meeting and it's driving me crazy. Calendar announcements then. Uh, we have Monday, May eleventh as a tentative workshop to discuss that after-school meals program. Uh, that would be six P M.
I'm looking at that at three P M, if that's okay with everybody. That works for uh Ann Hanselman and Lori Williams from our backpack program. Uh, yeah, that is to um, talk about the Federal Child and Adult Care Food Program uh, for that. So I'm looking at three o'clock next Monday, if that works for everybody.
Uh, is there anybody that doesn't work for? Oh, three o'clock next Monday, sounds good then, Matt. Let's put it in.
Awesome.
Uh, and then we have our regular school committee meetings, May eighteenth at six, June first at six, and June fifteenth at six. And we've got it to be determined as to locale.
Yeah, and Dawn, a couple other things just to announce. Uh, Jonathan and John and I and Cheryl Fortner uh, will be having our initial negotiations meeting with our Ed Tex and Administrative Assistance tomorrow uh, at eleven thirty. And then teacher negotiations continue with our teachers this Wednesday at three. The W S S R T V Advisory Committee is also scheduled to meet again this Wednesday at two thirty. As Kathy Sargent mentioned, the S R T C Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet this Wednesday, uh, this Friday rather, at eleven. And then um, Legacy also has a meeting this Wednesday at four.
Excellent. Then we also had the uh, the top fifty announcement on Thursday, right, Mr. Peterman? So that'll actually be out there and everybody can tune into that via YouTube and W S S R. Um, and then everything else will be after our next meeting. So we'll announce that stuff when we do that then. Uh, any other calendar announcements anybody wants to put out there? Okay, hearing none. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. I'll, I have to take the roll call. Kendra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Mapes?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative, affirmative as well. So, good night, everybody. Thanks for uh tuning in.
Thank you.